Hi, everyone, and welcome to this forum for candidates running for City Council Seattle, Position 9 on Transportation Equity and the Environment, being hosted by the Move All Seattle Sustainably or Mass Coalition and allied organizations. Our cosponsors tonight are 350 Seattle Action, Cascade Bicycle Club, Disability Rights Washington, Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, Seattle Subway, Sunrise Seattle, Transportation Choices Coalition, Transit Riders Union, and The Urbanist. We will be hearing tonight from candidates running for Seattle City Council Position 9, which is a citywide position rather than representing a specific district. And as an aside, there is also an election this year for City Council Position 8 happening, although we chose not to host a forum for that race. Our moderator tonight is Erica C. Barnett. Erica is a local reporter covering politics, transportation, housing, homelessness, and urbanism. She's been a writer and editor at publications such as Huffington Post, The Stranger, Seattle Weekly, Shakespeare, The Austin Chronicle, and many, many more, including at her own website, Publicola. She is also the author of Quitter: A Memoir of Drinking, Relapse, and Recovery, which was published last year. And you can find her at publicola.com or on Twitter at @publicolainews. Our questions for this evening were submitted to Erica from all of the cosponsoring organizations as well as from audience members who submitted questions during registration. We'll also be taking questions from the audience during the forum itself through the Q&amp;A box. So be sure to submit your questions there rather than in the chat box, which we won't be moderating as closely. Tonight captioning is available and can be shown or hidden on your device. And we'll be sharing recording and a full transcript after the event as well. If you missed it, you can also check out the recording and transcript of our mayoral candidate forum, which took place last week. And with that, I will turn it over to our moderator, Erica. Thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, everybody. I'm excited to be with you all on this beautiful night hosting this forum for City Council Position 9, which, as Clara mentioned, is an open seat, which means that everybody in Seattle can vote in this election. Thanks to the Mass Coalition and all the partner organizations for making this conversation possible. The format for tonight is as follows. We'll kick things off with a couple-minute introductory statement from each of our three candidates here tonight, followed by questions that each of the candidates will get 90 seconds to answer. And Ingrid will be monitoring time and letting you know via cards that you can see on your screen when you're running out of time. And there will also be an auditory queue in the form of a very lovely beep. So please try to stick to 90 seconds. And then during this portion of tonight's forum, each of the candidates will have 90 seconds, one 90-second opportunity to jump in, provide additional context to one of their answers, to respond to something another candidate said. And to use that opportunity, just jump in verbally, wave your hands like mad, get at me in the chat, whatever it takes. And please do use that opportunity. And then after the general questions, we will have a lightning round of yes or no and very short answer questions. And now it is my honor to introduce the candidates for Position 9 Seattle City Council: Sarah Nelson, Brianna Thomas, and Nikita Oliver. And we will begin with an opening statement by Nikita Oliver.
Well, good evening or early evening, everyone. My name is Nikita Oliver. I use they/them pronouns. I am a community organizer, attorney, executive director, adjunct professor, renter, and worker. And I've organized No Doppel, Masasga Talks, advocated for divestment from Wells Fargo, and advocated for municipal bank and progressive taxation. We're in a state of emergency. The climate catastrophe is now, housing affordability, homelessness, and an economic recession. If our city is to effectively address these issues, we need electics who can bring together intersecting communities and industries for bold solutions now. To solve these crises, we must first take an approach that centers racial equity and worker power to eliminate racist exclusionary zoning, build green work first housing, have safer streets, a walkable city, and a fully funded equitable transportation system. We need a just transition, multi-systems alignment, a 2024 comprehensive plan that reflects these commitments to accessibility and universal design. And we need to have a pipeline into green union jobs. As a candidate endorsed by the MLK Labor Council, ATU 587, Transit Riders, Seattle Sunrise Movement, Puget Sound Sage, former council member Michael Bryan, current councilor Tammy Morales, Senator Saldana, State Rep. Johnson, Harris, Talia, and Simmons, I know that I'm a candidate who can bring together partners across bureaucracies, labor, BIPOC, worker grassroots communities to address the climate crisis, have a walkable city, transit, and housing for all.
Thank you. And next, Brianna Thomas.
Good evening, everybody. I am Brianna Thomas, and I am running for Seattle City Council Position, as the interest said. And I am running because I have spent the time working inside the systems that you all know well, have the propensity to get in our way, the bureaucracy that you could cut through red tape with a machete ideally, the frustration about how we have so many problems that are in our face right this second, and not enough, it's not enough motion, not enough passion to get in there and do the work. I think that in the last five years that I've been working with the Seattle City Council, I have seen the importance of turning rhetorical phrases into actual real results, whether that's working for labor standard policies or partnering with many of you on this video tonight. Last year, we were renewing STBD. I understand that it takes months sometimes to go from a really good idea for a very obvious problem in our communities that made manifest and passing policies that help the most vulnerable right now. I am proud to be endorsed by former council member Larry Gossett, by Deborah Entiman, by Monet Doss, by Cindy Ryu, by Senator Steve Hobbs, because they know that we do need a regional approach to these challenges and that I am the person whose phone call they want to take when it's time to get down to the nitty-gritty of it. I'm looking forward to talking tonight about environmental sustainability, about what equitable development looks like, and how we can all have a conversation that doesn't pit each other against each other, but really meaning is a conversation about what we'd like to see for our future, our cities. And quite frankly, I'm running for future old Brianna because I want to age in place in this city, and I want to be able to get around on transit while I do it. So I look forward to this conversation. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Sarah Nelson.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for this monumental effort to get us all together. I really appreciate the opportunity. I am a small business owner running for City Council because I believe that Seattle's going in the wrong direction, and I'll bring the practical experience leadership that's needed right now. At heart, I'm a policy nerd who watches the Seattle Channel for fun. I served as Richard Conlin, Council Member Richard Conlin's LA, for close to 10 years, starting in 2002, when he was Transportation Chair, on through his presidency when they were planning the tunnel. And so I learned a lot about transportation planning and how it should be made and the intricacy thereof. My husband and I own Fremont Brewery. If you've ever been to our tasting room, you know how much real estate we dedicate to bike racks, but it's never enough. And we also requested that STOT install racks in the street to keep cars from parking in the 30-foot no parking zone. But basically, we subsidize our employees' orgard cards. We give a lot of free beer to local pet and bike nonprofits, including sponsoring many of Cascade Bike Club's major rides like SDP. My top priorities are economic recovery and getting back to the main job of local government, which is delivering basic services. And that's relevant tonight because transportation is one of the charter services that have been underfunded and a little bit mismanaged for years. One of my priorities under transportation is to prioritize the advancement of STOT's modal integration policy framework to bring together the bike, freight, transit, and pedestrian master plans into one modal plan to prioritize investments. There are tensions in the uses of our streets. And so having a consistent coherent policy toward planning is necessary. And that's the kind of leader I'll be. Attention to D.
Thank you. Goes first to Brianna Thomas. Should Seattle strive to be a 15-minute city, and if so, how?
Yes, please. I would love that. So I think that we all discovered during COVID, when mobility around our communities was limited due to a global pandemic, that each of our neighborhoods became more important than ever. I live in the West Seattle Junction, where I am fortunate to not live in a food desert. I am fortunate to have access to healthcare. I'm fortunate to have reliable transportation on the island. And I'm fortunate that I am in a part of the city that has access to many, many schools. And we've even got a movie theater, not to mention Al Qaeda. But that ability to have all those things that I need in my community is a supreme privilege, and it shouldn't be. We shouldn't have to worry about food access. We shouldn't have to worry about reliable transit. We shouldn't have to worry about whether or not someone can see an urgent care provider in the case of an emergency. So building communities that do have all of those things met right there, live, work, play, thrive, in a 15-minute bubble should be the goal of this city. Yes.
Sarah Nelson is next.
Absolutely. And I think that the confluence of these organizations and the way that you push the city to recognize your priorities and get them done is how we do it. Bringing people together to advance ways in which people can get around their neighborhoods safely and quickly. It also requires support for neighborhood business districts and service providers and neighborhood planning. So density, multimodal transportation options, and then healthy business community, et cetera. So I am not going to use my 90 seconds. I do believe, however, that how to pay for it is an issue. And you'll hear me saying this more than once tonight. There, we can go back to the voters now that I'm in the threat of raising, going back for the $60 that's still on the table by the enabling legislation for the VLF is a potential source of funding.
Thank you. And finally, Nikita Oliver.
Absolutely, yes. We need a 15-minute walkable city. But the real question is how, and how do we do it equitably? We need to first eliminate exclusionary zoning. It has made it so the density, 80% of it is being built on 12% of the land. And ultimately, it's also displacing low-income communities, BIPOC communities, worker communities. So as we move towards this walkable city, we need to build around transportation hubs that are preexisting and transportation hubs that we will know exist. And we have to prioritize social, green, affordable workforce housing so that workers can live close to where they play, where they live, where they access services. We also have to acknowledge that in many neighborhoods where people have been displaced, there's a lack of access to groceries, services, amenities. And so many of our workers travel long distances to maybe the one grocery store in their neighborhood. I live in the Rayner Beach neighborhood, and we literally only have one safe way to access. So really addressing the issues around what are the services that people need to access, doing that in lockstep with our transportation development, and developing a housing plan that prioritizes workers and low-income communities around those transportation hubs and services and amenities is going to be key to doing it in an equitable way.
Thank you. Our next question is an audience question submitted before the forum. And it is, how do you balance the need for public open spaces and recreational areas with the need for affordable permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness? And for this one, we'll start with Sarah Nelson.
Sarah, you're on mute.
Sarah, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I know. I was trying to find the little thingy. We balance it by addressing effectively, finally, our homelessness emergency that has been an emergency since 2015. I don't think that we should be asking, how do we balance everyone being able to access the commons and allow for people to, as a last resort, have no other options? So my take on this question is that we've got to restructure our response to the increasing numbers of people living unsheltered and provide real solutions in a variety of how short, medium, and long-term housing. I'm sure that everybody who's listening agrees with this. The point is, why has it not been done? And how do we go forward? And I think that it hasn't been done because of a failure of leadership, a failure of understanding and being able to deliver the services that people need. And I would say that mental health and substance abuse disorder are a key part of solving this problem. And so let's make some progress on this issue and then talk about open space and how, whether or not, et cetera. I'm getting off track, but I don't think it's an either/or. I think that these are, the first question is, are humanitarian and policy failure of being able to deal with homelessness? And it's immoral that we haven't gotten past this.
I'm going to use my prerogative to ask a very quick follow-up, which is, since the question was about parks and recreational areas, do you support removing encampments from parks in certain circumstances?
Yes. I'm not going to go into the certain circumstances. People have got to be provided housing, obviously. But that was the crux of the question, was it not?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, next on this question, Nikita Oliver.
Erica, do you actually just mind repeating the question? Because I lost track of it, listening to Sarah's answer. I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. It's how do you balance the need for public open spaces and recreational areas with the need for permanent affordable housing for people experiencing homelessness?
Thank you so much. Yeah, so I think first off, we just have to accept the fact that exclusionary zoning has meant that a majority of our city is not sharing the density that's needed to be built. So there are neighborhoods that do have parks and green spaces. While neighborhood's like the one that I live in, in the Rayner Beach area, has taken on a huge amount of density and has eliminated the possibility of us having those green spaces in our 15-minute walk area. It's also made it so many of us cannot afford to live here. I live on the very edge of Rayner Beach. So addressing exclusionary zoning, open up for neighborhood residential, the whole of the city, sharing the density that needs to be built, and having affordable housing, as I said earlier, around key transportation hubs, and prioritizing workforce housing and transitional housing and supports for our neighbors who are living outside is going to be key if neighborhoods that have been denied access to green spaces are going to have those spaces. So it really is a matter of sharing the density and the burden of addressing our housing affordability crisis to ensure that every neighborhood has access to green spaces and affordable workforce housing.
And Brianna Thomas.
Yeah, thank you for this question. I thought about golf courses. You guys remember when we had that conversation about whether or not we should take all the golf courses out of the city of Seattle and put affordable housing on it? And it was quite the kerfuffle. This makes me think of that space. One, I think there is absolutely a need for green spaces. Part of our, one of the best things about living in Seattle, we've got beautiful parks. We've got nationally recognized parks, and people should be able to walk to them. I think underlying the question as well is, how are we going to have a conversation about putting affordable housing in every corner of the city? To Nikita's point, and they're absolutely correct, exclusionary zoning is the scourge of our land use code. It is how we got to the place that we are right now. The "not in my backyard" attitude has put it in everybody's backyard, and everybody's park, and everybody's playground, and everybody's sidewalk. So we need to have a real hard conversation with ourselves about why we let that go on for generations at a time and let folks end up in the condition that they end, which is foundationally inhumane and an embarrassment to us as a city within a state of emergency that's been around for over five years. I think that one of the other things that we've got to really focus on is incentivizing small landlords that are good actors to continue to be good actors, to continue to support the naturally occurring affordable housing that you still find small pockets of in West Seattle, but is quickly diminishing across the city as and encourage black ownership of those properties because that's how we're going to deal with the huge gap that we've got in intergenerational wealth.
All right. The next question is about traffic enforcement. What is your position on police involvement with traffic enforcement? We'll start with Nikita Oliver.
I think police should be out of traffic enforcement. It is one of the biggest reasons why we see pretextual stops. It is highly racially disproportionate. And in communities like Rayner Beach, or Aurora, or the Central District, where there are over-police communities, those stops happen at higher rates and may result in incidents of escalation or even police brutality. So removing police officers from that particular form of enforcement is a way of creating safety. And there are other means of addressing traffic issues that don't include cops.
Brianna Thomas.
Yeah, absolutely. But we've got to make sure that we remember we have to bargain that change in work condition. And that means sitting down at the table with Spog, as we have tried several times in the last few years to not, you know, any of our shared goals for the outcomes there. I think the other thing to consider is whether or not the penalization of speeding, right? Like, is that, what are we, are we really changing human behavior by having police officers frighten folks that are black and brown because we have learned to be frightened of the police? What are we solving here with this problem? And is it a pretext for revenue collection? And if so, where else can we get that revenue from? But I think that's really what, to me, speaks to the heart of how we're doing that line of business. Yeah, stop talking now.
And Sarah Nelson.
I have to note that I completely misunderstood the last question. I thought that the question was, how do we balance parks and people living in parks? So I am sorry I gave the wrong, I gave an answer to the wrong question. Anyway, I think that a good place to start with the racial disparities in traffic enforcement is to have better cops. And so why are we just accepting that we will have racism in policing forever if that is one reason why we would consider not having police officers enforce traffic laws? So I would start there. I do recognize what Brianna said, is this is a Spog contract issue, and so that would be a heavy lift. I think that community policing would be a better use of funds for SPD. I recognize that also sometimes police officers encounter situations where it is good to have a uniformed police officer. And we do need to discourage people speeding through neighborhoods to attain our Vision Zero goals. So how to balance all of those competing interests? I'm not really sure. It's a complicated question that I can't say absolutely yes or no to.
All right. Next question is about zoning, which some of you have brought up already. The city's comprehensive, yes?
Brianna here. I'm going to use my 90 seconds.
Oh, there's your hand up. You're doing it exactly right.
Yeah, great.
Just butt in.
Thank you so much. I'm going to use my 90 seconds to ask candidate Nelson a question on that response. I understand that you studied the intersection of policing and race as part of your PhD. And so I think that it's fair to ask how you see the intersection of race and policing in the city, particularly with traffic stops. And I just wanted to just follow up on that because I do think you've got a subject matter expertise there.
Well, I also have...
Okay, I'm just going to jump in and say, for this answer, since it's a little unorthodox, I'll give Sarah 60 seconds to respond.
What I learned about poor women, black women from the favelas. But I understand that stops are often used to get somebody for another crime completely. So, or not a crime, just to check. It's harassment, et cetera. So I recognize, I think, what you're getting at there. Oh, I'm done.
Thank you.
But, yeah.
Next question. We're going to talk about zoning. City's comprehensive plan will be updated during your term. What role can zoning changes play in redressing the legacy of redlining and building a more sustainable future? And I think I'm still correct in the order. I think Brianna is first on this one. If not, we're starting with you.
Yeah, I think.
Going through the order.
Well, we are now. Here I am. Yeah, I think that, you know, all of us have touched on that in several of our answers beforehand. But we do have to recognize that the history of redlining has predicated the outcomes of communities, their educational outcomes, their economic outcomes, their health disparities. The children in South Park are still suffering rates of asthma at three times the rate of children in the north end of our city. And so when we're talking about how we're going to build, it's got to be from a position of understanding that, one, the infrastructure that we're building needs to be sustainable, it needs to be green, and it needs to build us toward an environmentally bold city moving forward because we are still absorbing environmental refugees. People are still moving to Seattle despite what the news tells you. And we should be building the city for the future right now. And then when it comes to building workforce housing, I think that making sure that we aren't continuing to concentrate poverty is a major, major culture shift for the city of Seattle because we have such a history of doing so. We need mixed-income housing, and we need to figure out how we're going to advocate for stronger MFT returns because right now, 12 years of housing, 12 years of tax credit only gets you four years of affordable housing. So making sure that we are advocating from our positionality to expand that program and its benefits to the community will be key.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Nelson.
Can you please repeat the question?
Sure. The question is, the city's comprehensive plan will be updated during your term. What role can zoning changes play in redressing the legacy of redlining and building a more sustainable future?
Well, so we do need more housing. And yet we also have to prevent the displacement of people already here. So it's twofold. So when you talk about zoning changes, we need to increase density. We need to encourage residential infill so that people can age in place and also perhaps generate more income to be able to stay in their homes. And then building more units that will free up the, they might be market rate. I would, but there is, you know, the, we already mentioned the MFT, but there is also the mandatory housing affordability funds and matching those with perhaps more federal and state grants to be able to create more subsidized affordable housing. So zoning changes have to happen first. One place to do that is the plan right now. It's a proposal to allow for housing on top of religious organizations, well, on the property of religious organizations that would require land use changes and that the organization would be the provider of that housing. So infill and different ways of going about to create exactly workforce housing level units in places that have borne the brunt of our racist history of redlining. It's those communities that we need to focus on first.
All right. Thank you. And Nikita Oliver.
So in 1923, a guy by the name of Harlan Bartholomew, a known segregationist, is who helped us develop our comprehensive plan for the city, put exclusionary zoning in place, demarcated things like our industrial lands. And then you put redlining on top of that. And our racial wealth gap is deeply steeped in the lack of access, not just to affordable housing, but also a lack of access to home equity. So as we move into our comprehensive plan 2024, yes, we need to have neighborhood residential throughout all of the city and also protect our industrial lands. We also have to have a plan for what do co-ops, community land trusts, and homeownership look like, withstanding the fact that many white families have built their wealth out of their home equity. So prioritizing home supports for BIPOC communities is going to be key if we're going to see the racial wealth gap be addressed as a part of our comprehensive 2024 plan. And then there's also just building mass amounts of workforce affordable housing. Many of our BIPOC communities and our workers are cost-burdened, spending way more than 30% of their income on housing and around and around 16% on transportation. This prevents families being able to save. It prevents them from being able to buy homes. And, and when things happen like a health crisis or they lose a job, we get pushed even further into debt. So thinking about our comprehensive plan as it aligns with our goals for closing that racial wealth gap, having more opportunities for homeownership and building workforce affordable housing in the city is going to really be key to addressing that.
All right, thank you. And I want to just remind anybody who's watching on Zoom that if you want to submit a question, please do so in the Q and A box, not in the chat. Next question is about public transit, free, free public transit. Major cities from Paris to LA are contemplating free public transit. Some, like Tallinn, Estonia, and the entire country of Luxembourg, already have it. Olympia's inner-city transit went fare-free starting in January 2020. Do you agree with this goal? And if so, what will you do to pursue free transit in Seattle and our region? And if not, why not? And we will start with Nikita Oliver.
Absolutely, yes. We need free transit. And I want to acknowledge young people at Raynor Beach High School who fought for the Orca Opportunity Program because they saw that students needed free transit. I want to acknowledge that we've seen programs like the U-Pass Program actually be very effective in the 90s. And withstanding that in that time, more people could live close to work and school. But we know that free transit helps families. We know that free transit is really important for building a city that is accessible. But free transit's not enough. So we need to find ways to fund it. And thinking about how 70 to about 80% of our transit in our region is subsidized, we could be working with the county and the state to see if there's the possibility of the county having a small payroll tax, one that does not grant the city tax, to be able to have a regional plan for free transit through King County Metro. Because it's not just people living in Seattle who are having issues with the lack of access to transportation is a regional issue. I run a King County-wide program for young people who struggle to get access to resources in Seattle because they don't have access to an equitable transit system. Once they hit 18, 19, 20, 22, 24, there's not equitable services for them. So working with the county, pursuing progressive taxation are all going to be really key aspects to building a system that has high levels of service and is free so that more people will be willing to use it.
Thank you. Sarah Nelson.
Well, my question is, why are we going to let people who can afford transit and the businesses that are participating in the, the commute chip reduction program, which subsidizes Orca cards? Why are we going to be letting people that can afford it and, and businesses off the hook? And if we do that, how are we going to replace the Fairbox revenue? And I, I agree that, that there, that there are ways to reduce or make free transit for people that are low income or who cannot, basically low-income people. And one model for that is the U-Pass system. It could be expanded citywide, that increased ridership and, and was successful in, in the localized area. We could offer something like that. Orca is, the Orca Pass can be tweaked to be means-tested. And the problem is that there are eight jurisdictions who are involved in the Orca program. So that could be complicated, but that would be a place that I would start. But again, making something free for businesses and people who can afford it, I don't, why would we do that?
All right, Brianna Thomas. And I apologize, I got, I got the names out of order this time. I have to do that at least once per forum. It's the law. So now I've done it and we'll return to the same order on the next question. But for now, Brianna, you're up.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I absolutely support the goal of free transit for all. But we do want to recognize that right now we have made transportation accessible, particularly transit for quite a few groups of people. With the STBD, we made it accessible for essential workers. We have bus passes available for Seattle Public School students. And 60% of the revenue that we collect right now is from corporations. So if you want to talk about who's actually paying for a thing, it is currently 60% being paid by, for corp, by corporation sponsorship. You know, and it's not an Amazon tax, but I will take it as a start. I think one of the other things we have to think about is not just whether or not free transportation is, is the goal, but good transportation should be the goal. A free bus that comes every 30 minutes on a route that needs service every 15 doesn't actually solve the problem, I think we're all aiming at, which is increased transit ridership. So developing transit in places that makes it easier for folks to get to, making sure those service hours are being equitably distributed. And I'm talking like early, early morning, late, late night. Because not everybody's a nine-to-five worker. People don't do business and move around the city just during daylight hours. We need to make sure that transportation is accessible to everyone in Seattle around the clock. And I agree with that fact. We need to build out a more robust and thoughtful regional approach with our partners over at King County. But I don't want to get in a trap of sacrificing good transit for free transit.
Thank you. Our next question is about greenhouse gas emissions. Seattle's greenhouse gas emissions are not on track to meet our city's stated climate goals. Transportation accounts for 60% of Seattle's emissions. So shifting to low-carbon modes like transit, biking, walking, and rolling is a climate necessity. If elected, what is the highest impact action you would take to make this happen? And we'll start with Brianna.
Yes, for a back-to-back. So definitely transportation infrastructure being built so that people are getting out of their cars. Also, green development and infill are, we know that, you know, buildings are the number two polluter, cars are the number one. So let's build transportation so we've got less cars on the road. And let's make sure that the infrastructure we're building around the city is green, is sustainable, and does encourage a 15-minute walkable neighborhood so I don't have to get in my car to do a thing. And I will not believe in that answer.
Sarah Nelson.
All right, well, my contribution to this will be to serve as a bridge to work more effectively with the private sector and partner with businesses on solutions. Because we're never going to reach our carbon neutrality goals unless we figure out ways to get the business community to step up their investments in electric vehicles, encourage mode shift by, mode shift by participating in the commute to production program, providing bike racks, showers, et cetera. And who better to initiate this reset, this reaching out for, for partner, for partnership, is who better than a small business owner who has, whose business has a reputation for, for sustainability? So what I'll be focusing on is increasing participation in CTR, CTR by 30% within the first two years in office and incentivize other ways to get more businesses online. So, and speaking of bridges, I will also try to desilo the four SDOT programs that currently work on reducing greenhouse gas emissions in transportation. Right now, it's Vision Zero, Street Cars Transit, and the Bike Program. And if the goal is to reduce greenhouse gases in transportation, these programs should be working together, not competing for resources. Because cooperation will lead to faster implementation of our climate goals. Infrastructure planning will be more cohesive and the value adds of investments will be multiplied.
Nikita Oliver.
So my understanding is that 50% of the 60% is single occupancy vehicles. And so we have to get cars off the road. And that is a part of having this transportation system that allows multimodal transportation that is safe, where people can walk, cycle, take public transit to work, school, childcare. And as we've already said earlier, doing this in lockstep with the development of housing, ending racist exclusionary zoning, having infill strategies that have multiple options of housing are all key. There's also having social affordable green housing. We have to build green now. And so as a city council member, I want to push us as a city to make that commitment that all new buildings will be green and acknowledge that it's time to get off oil and gas and move forward into a green economy. And that has to happen with a just transition, though. We need to do it in partnership with labor to ensure that those workers that are transitioning have access to pensions, have access to job retraining, and that we do so in a way that honors the labor movement. So having pre-apprenticeship, apprenticeship programs, pipelines into green, unionized jobs will also be a really big part of building a comprehensive green Seattle that has a green economy.
All right. We have gotten a bunch of questions about sidewalks. And so I'm going to sort of encapsulate all of them as both what will you do to build sidewalks in areas of the city that are missing sidewalks? And, and how will you ensure that sidewalks are clear and accessible for people who are biking, walking, and rolling? And we will start with Sarah.
Well, we have made promises to North Seattle and South, South Seattle, Southeast Seattle to build sidewalks. And it's likely that we will not reach our goals. The, the most expensive part about building sidewalks is, is dealing with the drainage issues. So we need to prioritize our investments. And we should be putting sidewalks on major arterials. So where they, where they don't exist right now. For example, on Aurora, between 115th and 145th, that is a place with frequent transit and should have sidewalks. So we should be targeting sidewalks. If we can't build them all, then we should be targeting them along frequent transit first. In Southeast Seattle, there are, there are many streets that, neighborhood streets that could benefit from these natural drainage systems. If we can't get sidewalks everywhere, then there are, the community has been asking for walkways. And natural drainage systems do have the advantage of providing a, a soft curb that could be implemented faster for, to accommodate the need for sidewalks and safer streets there. But the Penn Master Plan calls for sidewalks near frequent transit and has a point system for deciding where to, you know, how to prioritize where to put them. But we should be putting sidewalks first on arterials with frequent transit.
Thank you. Nikita Oliver.
So I believe that when we make decisions around our budget, it shows our values and where we align. And our city has continued to say that we do not value disability justice. We are being inherently ableist in the way that we're addressing the pedestrian master plan by not focusing clear resources into building sidewalks with curb cutouts so that community members that are on wheelchairs or other modes of movement around the city can access public transit services and amenities. So we cannot talk about a walkable city if we will not make the clear and needed investments in sidewalks, especially in Aurora or in South Seattle where I live, where people are walking great distances to access public transit. And this attaches to our Vision Zero goal. If we're going to actually get to ending fatalities, serious fatalities, while people are walking or in cars, sidewalks are going to be a huge part of, of doing that. So when it comes to the Move Seattle levy, where we've actually failed right now to meet our goals, we need to find a way to prioritize in our budget that $91 million that we said we were committed to for the pedestrian master plan and be committed to be in a city that honors disability justice and get sidewalks and curb cutouts in place, not just in the areas where we know transit is located, but especially in the areas where we know children are, where we know community members accessing affordable housing are, because it's really important.
Thank you. Brianna Thomas.
Yeah, and I do disagree a little bit with Sarah on the prioritization of arterials with transportation because I do think our neighborhoods that house our elders and our children and our folks that are differently able, they need sidewalks too. They need sustainably, I'm not sustainably, I'm so sorry, y'all. I'm just hot in here. Not sustainably, but like predictability and how they're going to move through their 15-minute neighborhoods. If we want neighborhoods to be 15 minutes walkable, you got to have somewhere to walk. I think one of the more innovative things that we could do is just to let Donghao Train go crazy. I mean, that dude is the G of civil engineering for the city of Seattle. So let's just let his team go wild and then make sure they're doing it through a racial equity lens, which, based on my understanding of the impetus of those folks coming to work every day, they would do that anyway. But I think we just have to start trusting some of our, not policymakers, but actual civil servants. You know, folks who come to work every day for the city of Seattle do so because they do want to solve problems for their communities and they have subject matter expertise that policymakers frequently get in the way of. So maybe we just need to do a better job of listening to the experts we already have working for the city of Seattle, day in and day out, and follow their direction.
All right, thank you. Next question is about the Stay Healthy and Keep Moving Streets, which I, I've never really known the difference, but the streets that are closed down to cars, open to people on bicycles, on foot, on skates, in wheelchairs. What should happen to those streets? There's 25 miles of them, and should they be expanded? And we'll start, we'll start this question with Nikita Oliver.
I think that we should definitely maintain the 25 miles that we have and that we should expand them. That shows that we are commit, that we as a city are actually committed to moving towards being a city that's not just about cars. But one of the problems right now with the Stay Healthy, Keep Moving Streets is that there are mixed modalities. So they do have limited pedestrian safety because there are still cars moving through those spaces or other things that could bring harm to pedestrians that are, that are moving there. So decreasing the number of them that's, that have mixed modalities and increasing the number really does show our commitment to becoming that 15-minute walkable city.
I, I want to follow up and, and I'm going to actually follow this up with this for all three candidates because I'm, I'm seeing another question I think is relevant. Are there any streets that, in particular, that you might prioritize for another type, you know, either for a similar treatment with completely closed, not mixed modality, or just other places where there shouldn't be space for cars?
Yeah, I think roads that we could do this on are Beacon Avenue and Raynor Avenue South, decreasing the areas where folks can park, prioritizing having bus lanes and changing the way in which those arterials are physically set up is going to be really important for achieving our Vision Zero goals. Each of those roads has the propensity for people to drive at the speed that they feel comfortable driving at. And so changing the way those roads are structured, prioritizing public transit are going to be really key parts of both creating safety and developing a transit system that is equitable and accessible for everybody.
All right, thanks. And we'll go on to Brianna Thomas.
I'm going to repeat the question back, Erica. Was it, do we, what do we do with the safe streets?
Yeah, should they stay? Should they, should the 25 miles stay open and should they be expanded?
Okay, well, first you would recognize that a lot of people on this call that are watching right now have been advocating for this exact thing for years and years and years, and it took a pandemic to make it real. So yay, you never know how you're going to get there, but we did. I do think that we should make these, these streets and these changes permanent, but I think that's going to take infrastructure investments that are substantive. We just learned about how hard it was to get a sidewalk to make sure that we do have, you know, we are building in alignment with our Vision Zero goals. And, you know, it's not just what kind of infrastructure, but like Allegra infrastructure, right? Like all ages, genders, ethnicities, abilities. Everybody needs to be able to move through these corridors. And I think if I had to pick where I would do it, I'd prioritize. And, you know, I understand the city's big and I don't mean to sound like a downtowner or a person who works downtown. But, you know, Pike Pine seems like a fairly healthy quarter considering that we're considering moving toward a lid. Let's just get that whole chunk for feet only and, you know, increase people's ability to connect, reconnect neighborhoods without having to do so in a way that is so car-reliant.
Great, thank you. And Sarah Nelson.
Well, one final note on the sidewalks there. Because nobody said how we are going to pay for all the sidewalks. And my point is that we have to prioritize. One other way to make streets safe is through chicanes that slow down traffic. So there is the potential for increasing the usage of that. Like on 70th between Roosevelt's, I mean, between 12th and 15th and some other places, some Finney Ridge, et cetera, between Third and Palatine, et cetera. So that is another option. When we talk about safe streets, yes, let's maintain those, those 25 miles. Most of these streets are in neighborhoods. And so I don't understand how, how eliminating cars completely is going to meet that goal if people have to get to and from their homes. But if we do expand the program, I think that we should prioritize around affordable housing hubs. And because that is a place where a lot of people have some, more people have some mobility issues. And that is, I think that if you're going to have to pick and choose where, then that would be a good start.
Thank you. The next question is about sound transit realignment. You may or may not end up being on the Sound Transit Board, whoever gets elected. But either way, what are your priorities for sound transit realignment and station planning in Seattle? And, and how could Seattle get rapid transit more quickly? And this will go first to, I forgot the order. I think Brianna is up.
I'll take it. As a West As a West Seattle resident, I'm not going to lie, I've got a little bit of self-interest here in making sure that West Seattle gets delivered on time and as close to budget as we can get it done. But, you know, I think we do have to recognize that unless you are a member of the Sound Transit Board, there are barriers to that, the impact of any given council member to get that work done in a timely manner. I think part of that, though, is relationship. I think the fact that I've been endorsed by Steve Hobbs, who is not always the most popular person, but is the Senate Transportation Chair. Like when you were working across levels of government, you've got to be able to get a call back from somebody when you're making sure that things are getting done in a way that is equitable, that is timely, that is responsive to the community. And yep. The end.
All right. Sarah Nelson.
All right. So repeat the question, please.
Sure. It's about how Seattle can get the rapid transit that it needs sooner. And what would you prioritize as part of Sound Transit's realignment process?
All right, I'm going to focus most of my question on that. So the the $8 billion shortfall is a huge blow to Sound Transit 3, but I do support King County Executive Dow, Constantine, and Mayor's Durkin in Balducci for slowing down, for standing firm on not taking, you know, a hatchet to the project list yet. They want to have some more time and not do it over the summer. And I think that's good for the projects that are of interest, like the West Seattle and the Ballard Spur, et cetera. So I do think that with the economy picking up and the possibility for getting federal funding, that waiting on cutting projects is the best thing to do. I staffed Richard on the Sound Transit Board, so I was in the room when that aligned and station locations of ST2 was being determined. And during station area planning, it was our office that pushed Sound Transit to change the Brooklyn station engineering to allow for several floors on top. So we fought hard for the inclusion of a station at South Graham and at 130th. And we're disappointed that it was not funded in Sound Transit 2, but it will be in Sound Transit 3. Unfortunately, the Graham, the 130th station won't come online fast enough at the same time that the Linwood Link segment comes onboard. I think what's most important, though, is not changing the headway time from six minutes to eight minutes, which is planned for the summer. If you have a Cadillac system, not a Cadillac, but why are we with increased ridership going to, with the new stations, increase headways as well?
Thank you. Nikita Oliver.
So my understanding with the Sound Transit Board is that earlier this year, they presented three realignment plans. And just early in June, they talked about either an expanded capacity approach or a planned required approach. And what it seemed like they were leaning towards was a planned required approach, which means they restructure the order of projects in order to address the $6 billion gap. The goal of those should be to deliver ST3 as on time as possible with lots of workforce housing around it. And the best alignment plan is going to be one that prioritizes working people who are coming into the city, low-income communities impacted by displacement, and those communities farthest from work and school that lack equitable access to transportation. This is essential for addressing the climate catastrophe. It is essential for addressing the widening racial wealth gap. And it's essential for ensuring that our workers are able to move through the city or in and out of the city in an effective and quick way, which ultimately is really what building our subway system and having effective transportation should really be about, is ensuring that people can move effectively through. We have a huge equity issue. And so any realignment plan that does not first focus on communities that are receiving high rates of displacement, communities with lots of workers, or BIPOC communities, is not one that aligns with the needs of our city and our region.
Thank you. The next question is about road pricing, which was an issue in the last elections four years ago. And it still hasn't happened. Should the city continue pursuing a road or congestion pricing system? And if so, what would your top priority be for such a policy? For example, would it be to control traffic congestion, fund transit walk-bike infrastructure, or reduce carbon emissions and pollution? And we'll start with Nikita.
Yeah, first of all, congestion pricing is pretty regressive in the way that we're set up right now. So it's not to say that it's wrong, but it is to say we have to acknowledge that there are workers and folks in our communities that it will deeply impact. So if there isn't a huge equity analysis in place, it's going to be very problematic. The second part of that is if we're not building transportation the way I just described in the last question, prioritizing communities that have been displaced, BIPOC communities and workers, then what we do is we take money from those folks who are coming in and we're not even prioritizing their access into the city with equitable free transportation. And so if we were to put congestion pricing in place in the downtown corridor specifically in order to address our climate issues and to have funding to build out transportation, it really needs to go towards funding transportation projects in those communities that have been displaced or have the farthest distance to travel to get to work, school, or childcare.
All right, Brianna.
This is still super contentious, but I'm going to say yes, I support congestion pricing because my understanding is the people who are driving into downtown right now are affluent, car-owning lawyers. That's who's in our garage, that's who's driving in most right now, day in and day out. And if we are trying to figure out multiple ways to tax people who have resources, then these are the people who have resources. And I don't disagree with Nikita that the folks who are coming in to work in town, who are not landed, gentry, car-owning folks, who are not committed to environmental goals. But I do disagree that we should leave that money on the table. I would prioritize spending that money on additional infrastructure for transportation and housing.
And Sarah.
Yes, we should pursue congestion pricing.
Nikita's got their hand up.
Oh, sorry. Let's go to Nikita.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say, I actually don't think it's just lawyers that are driving into downtown. I think it's construction workers, many of whom are struggling to even find places that they can park that are affordable. I've heard this from many of our folks in the trades, including folks like our carpenters, folks that are in the ironworkers, that coming into downtown is already incredibly expensive just by the sheer fact that there is no parking. So I do think there is a huge equity issue, knowing that we're a city that has a lot of development happening. And there are workers who would be deeply impacted by congestion pricing. So just how, when it comes to the income tax, that has to be a 1% flat rate, we're talking about what does equity look like with that? I think similarly with congestion pricing, though it's important to move us forward, if there's not an equity dialogue about what it's impacting, we may just put another regressive tax in place.
Thank you. And now we'll go back to Sarah.
Congestion pricing achieves all three goals. It achieves, you know, transit and revenue and equity. Look, so getting, you know, it could be that less people drive into town because it might be prohibitive, and that would help buses. We're all talking about, you know, transit service, and congestion pricing helps transit. It also provides a revenue source that could be used for transit or bike and ped infrastructure. When poor people come into town, then they have to pay parking. And so there's already a barrier for that. And yes, some people do drive, and that is a burden. But I think that the benefits of congestion pricing far outweigh the negatives. We need more revenue for all the things we're talking about tonight. And it would make it much easier for buses to circulate. And that's the equity lens.
Thank you. Next question. How would you prioritize our limited transportation revenues? For example, if you could choose between new bike and pedestrian lanes versus new vehicle infrastructure, which would you fund? And if you answer both, please explain how you will raise new progressive revenues dedicated for transportation. And we'll start with Brianna.
Yeah, I would definitely prioritize bike and multiple infrastructure, for sure. Because I think we're trying to build a city where people can actually bike around. I am not elegant on a bike, y'all. I do not ever think to take a bicycle anywhere on account of the fact that I am not foundationally graceful. But I think that creating opportunities for people like me to be more open to putting on a helmet and at least biking around their communities opens the door to folks being able to use it more holistically across different parts of their life. Right? So I think that if our goal is to build infrastructure that encourages behavior, just like our investments in transit and equitable development, or to incentivize behavior, we really do have to meet people where they are. And I think that that infrastructure should be prioritized for communities that are the same communities we've been talking about all day. They're the same ones that don't have sidewalks. They're the same ones that don't have, you know, the curb cuts that they need to have all over the community. And so I think I would like to learn more about what those investments could look like for people like me. No offense to the folks that are already avid riders on the Zoom today, but I think it's getting people like me that aren't avid riders engaged in that moving around town that should be the goal.
And I'm going to ask a quick follow-up, and then I'll ask the other candidates to also address this follow-up, which is the second part of this question. How would you and how would you raise progressive revenues for transportation needs? And you can say, no, I wouldn't. Or if you say yes, how would you go about doing that?
We get this question about revenue quite a bit. And I think that, one, I just want to say, I think the city has done a heck of a job trying to find any progressive revenue, much less revenue that is so solely dedicated. You know, if it wasn't for councilmember Muscat's work on Jump Start, we would have been in a $239 million bigger hole while we were trying to figure out how to allocate ARPA funds this year. So good ups on the council for doing that. You know, I wish that we could figure out a mechanism at the state level because we know that our regressive tax system problems start at the state level, not just the city level. And we talk about city solutions, but we're always nibbling around the edges. So I would do, I'd put more energy into figuring out how we partner with the state to turn this tax structure right side up.
Thank you. Sarah Nelson is next.
All right, so I'll just return to what I said before. We've got $60 on the table that we can raise, you know, that we're allowed to right now. We don't have to ask the legislature for that. We have the ability to put that to the voters, like we put the Transportation Benefit District to the voters. And so that is a source of funding that could go a long way for a lot of the things that we're talking about. Look, bikes, peds, vehicles, buses, freight, all travel on roads and bridges. And I believe that we need to chip away at the maintenance backlog and repair backlog and fix the infrastructure that we have right now. That is good for buses, it's good for bikes, it's good for pedestrians. So let's fix what we have right now and also generate, make sure that we look at new investments through a lens that incorporates the priorities of all of our master plans, freight, bike, ped, and the last one that I'm forgetting right now. But there needs to be a policy that guides these investments while maintaining the infrastructure that we have. I mean, the West Seattle folks there are waiting for their bridge to be repaired. We don't want other bridges to fail, and we've got four others that are in bad need of repair and improvements.
And Nikita is next.
Yeah, so I was very inspired last year by the Bike Brigade that provided a lot of support to protest. And so as a part of Bike Brigade, they were giving folks bikes, and I was able to get one. And so I started riding it around the Central District near where I work. And I will tell y'all, I am terrified. I'm terrified of cars. I'm terrified that there's no barrier between me and the cars. I'm tired that bike lanes don't exist. Like I might be on a bike lane on one street and I turn onto another and there's no bike lane on that next street. And so I think improving bike lanes is definitely a priority so that more people like myself, who's a novice, I don't know what to do with the big metal machines on the road when I am on my bike. And in fact, I think I get distracted at times. And there are just so many hazards. So how can we improve the actual physical infrastructure around our cyclists? I would also say, and this is a bit of a both and, is how do we improve having more access that is committed to buses, for buses to be more effective? And can we have more opportunity for there to be small buses that move east-west between neighborhoods to get people to our main arterials where there are larger transportation hubs? So it's easier to move through the city if you live east-west off of a transportation hub. So both bike lanes and also improving our actual, our public transportation infrastructure as well.
Thank you. Next question is about parking enforcement, or sorry, traffic enforcement. Mayor Jenny Durkin has been slow to roll out automated enforcement cameras as authorized by the state legislature in a pilot that runs until mid-2023. Camera enforcement could reduce bus lane cheating and blocking the box when motorists block the crosswalk that people, especially disabled people, need to cross the street. How will you implement this pilot program? And would you like to see a permanent program? What about expanding this to include cameras on bike lanes to deter motorists from blocking bike lanes? And we'll start with, I believe, Sarah Nelson is up. Yep, Sarah.
I do support automatic enforcement cameras because they keep people safe. And, you know, people are, it's a behavior modification tool. And so we need people to stop blocking the box, stop blocking bus lanes. And so I think that we should go forward with this program. And when we talk about adding them to bike lanes, there were 28 bike and ped fatalities in 2018 and 2019. And of those 28, 25 were pedestrian. And so if we were to include more cameras, we need to, if we're really focused on Vision Zero, we need to decouple the bike fatalities and the pedestrian fatalities and figure out how can cameras help reduce both and then fund accordingly? Because we're not going to be able to put cameras everywhere. There are limited resources. And so that's how I would prioritize the expansion of the program.
Thank you. Nikita Oliver.
Yeah, I do support a rollout of the program. I think that it needs to happen first in high-income areas. I think a lot about one of my law professors who used to say that wealthy people can afford to speed or break the law when it comes to a traffic infraction because they can pay the ticket. And so I just think it's important that we acknowledge that the equity issues that do very much exist in our city. I think that in low-income areas, what we need to implement in order to decrease the likelihood that people will be in bus lanes or be in bike lanes or cause some sort of violence while on the road is that we need to have a strategy of community education. We should put up signs letting folks know that fines will be coming so there is an alert in that community. And that when cameras do go up in any community, these should not be stealth cameras. These cameras should be apparent. There should be a warning because the real deterrent should come from not wanting to get the ticket. And also acknowledging that this is a punitive response to something that through community education, more quality barriers, better ways of letting drivers know what needs to happen in what lanes. In Raynor Valley where I live, when the lanes changed to having single bus lanes, it felt like there had been no real acknowledgement that that was happening. And then all of a sudden, we're not supposed to drive there. So how do you let communities know when and how things are changing? So that when we do put something like cameras in place, it's not just like a sudden punitive thing that's happening.
Thank you. And Brianna Thomas.
As much as I want revenue, I'm a little bit concerned about the privacy concerns for communities. I think Nikita is definitely thinking in the absolute right direction. We talk about where we roll out the pilot programs. You know, the ACLU has been part of the Surveillance Working Group since 2018, and they constantly flag the challenges about maintaining surveillance equipment by the state that can identify and track the movements of individuals without clear markings, clear warnings, or a way for community members to opt out. So as much as I appreciate what the pilot program is attempting to achieve, and I'm certainly a firm believer in making sure we're enforcing all of our laws, but I'm not sure that this is the right mechanism to do so without understanding what the impact on community privacy and community actual safety is by putting it through a Surveillance Impact Report, which, by the way, we are about two groups behind on already for a technology that we already own. So we probably wouldn't be able to evaluate it or get a response till 2023.
All right, and this will be our last question in this first segment, this first very long segment. And then we'll do a quick round of short answers, yes and no's. Final question is how will you deal with a controversy that often arises? Final question is, how will you deal with a controversy that often arises when a bus lane or bike lane is added to the street in a way that slows down car traffic or moves on-street parking? And we'll start with Nikita.
Yeah, I think controversy is inevitable as we're making these changes, and it does matter how we engage communities. So one thing that that our campaign does is community listening post, and it's something we started in 2017 with our first mayoral campaign, of engaging people where they're at and having real conversations about the needs and what might actually be the reasons why they're opposed to it. And then using those spaces for political education or community education, really letting people know that changing this bus lane is actually going to open up, changing this into a bus lane will open up more opportunity for access to public transit. I think there also has to be some additional incentives. And communities like where I live, public transit is not effective, the seven does not run on a consistent timeframe. So people are not necessarily believing that the bus is going to be faster or more on time or outside of the nine to five hours. And so really actually prioritizing what makes this change of having this bus lane on the road actually useful for the community that it's in, so that when it's received, it's actually received in a way that meets the community's needs. So that requires being in community, hearing from voices, organizing with the Mass Coalition, groups like Puget Sound Sage, Raynor Beach Action Coalition, all groups that I'm already connected to and about to bring into doing this very important work for building a transportation system that works for everyone and gets us to our climate goals.
Thank you. Brianna Thomas.
Erica, can you please repeat the question?
Absolutely. How will you deal with the controversy that often arises when a bus lane or bike lane is added to the street in a way that slows down car traffic or removes on-street parking?
Yeah, people make fun of the Seattle process, but we've used it for a lot of good things, including getting community engagement and making sure the decisions that we're making collectively are indeed collective decisions. One of the things I've heard that folks miss is our community councils, which, you know, we took a good hard look at them, and they were exclusionary, they were racist, they were classist, they were biased against people that weren't English speakers. And so we dismantled them in 2017, but we didn't put anything back in its place to fill that vacuum. And so I think that making sure that the city as a whole is taking a look at how we communicate information, not just individual organizations, but the city does have a responsibility to fill that vacuum. And then, you know, long story short, folks, we chased Rob Johnson out of town over a bike lane. Wowzers, we got to figure out how to have these communicate these conversations in a way that does hold people in positions of policymaking authority accountable, but that community is also accountable for how they are going into the conversation. Because as I mentioned before, this is not an easy position that anyone on this panel is asking for, and it is very easy to vilify any one of us for a position that we take that is unpopular, but, and that pressure doesn't get less once you get elected. I assure you, it only ratchets it, fractured its up. So, one, having a tough skin, and two, understanding that normally that sort of outcry is coming from a place of people not feeling heard by their public servants and building something to fill in that space.
Thank you. And Sarah Nelson.
One more note on automated traffic cameras. Anyway, it is low-income black and brown people that are on buses that are slowed by affluent people in cars blocking the lane. So I think that we have to look at who is being slowed down when we choose to decide where to put those cameras. So, look, like I said in the opening, we need to have a policy to determine infrastructure and end use of roads, because we do have all these different competing needs. Bikes slow down transit, it's been shown what has happened on Second and on some other, not on Second, but on other streets. And I'm less concerned about cars than I am for freight, as I went to the North Seattle Industrial Association meeting this morning, and on the 40 that competes, you know, that's the one arterial, it's a bridge going over Fremont Bridge, trucks and buses use that. So that's what I'm concerned about, and that is why we need an integrated modal plan to figure out how do we deal with these competing issues so that it's not a one-off decision every time, so that we don't have to have it devolve into a, the Seattle process. So that's, it would be my answer.
Thank you, everybody. And now I'm gonna do a bunch of lightning round questions. We're just gonna stick in the same order, and so I apologize to Brianna, who's gonna get to go first on all these, but if you look on the bright side, you'll be done first as well. So, how, let's see. Will you legalize apartments in more neighborhoods to create a more affordable, sustainable, and transit-oriented city? Brianna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Nikita?
Yes.
Do you support decriminalizing fare non-payment on sound transit trains and buses? Brianna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Nikita?
Yes.
What is your primary mode of transportation? Brianna?
The sweet, sweet sea line.
Sarah?
Bike and car. And bus.
Car.
Do you support full free transit for all? Brianna?
Full free transit for all. Is that the question?
Yes, that's the question.
Definitely maybe.
Sarah?
No, businesses should not be let off the hook.
And Nikita?
Yes, and I must raise taxes on businesses.
Should King County Metro consider smaller buses to use as feeders for mass transit? Brianna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Maybe.
And Nikita?
Yes.
Would you push legislation to expand transit benefits to lower wage or part-time workers who work for large companies? Brianna?
Already did it in STBD, yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Nikita?
Yes, until we have free transit.
Do you support ranked choice voting? Brianna?
Yes, enthusiastically.
Sarah?
Yep.
And Nikita?
Yes, I would have loved to have had it in 2017.
As a city council member, will you finish the downtown streetcar connection from Capitol Hill to Suffolk Union? Brianna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yep.
And Nikita?
Yes.
Will you commit to requiring the Seattle Department of Transportation to increase maintenance of our roads and bridges? Brianna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yep.
And Nikita?
Yeah, I just want to like acknowledge, like, I don't think that this is entirely a city council role. I do think the executive's office plays a big role in the administration of the budget. We do present a balanced budget and get funding to them, but there is some flexibility in how they do determine how they spend those dollars in relationship to the executive. So I think that's really a question for our next mayor.
Actually, the council has used the budget proviso very effectively to, to make sure that money is spent according to their policy decisions.
Anybody, Brianna, you want to jump in? All right.
I'll tell Nikita, but they have a point, you can't make an executive cash a check.
Do you, do you support litting I-5? Brianna?
Hmm, I don't know yet.
Sarah?
In theory, I do. I don't know enough about that project.
And Nikita?
I do support and I would prioritize affordable housing first, the cost per unit and the overall impacts when it comes to density would be better.
All right, since we have a couple of minutes left, I want to give everybody an opportunity to make a closing statement. If you want to use this time to expand on anything that you didn't feel you had an opportunity to talk about as much as you wanted, or just to let viewers know a little bit more about you and your policies that relate to transportation, sustainability, and equity, that would be great. So we will start with Sarah.
So I'm just gonna play cleanup on myself. The streets that I was talking about where bikes have slowed transit, and then, you know, you have to think about the equity issue, are Pike Pine and Broadway and Second. When I was referring to 60 more dollars on the table, I was referring to the VLF. I also mentioned the Transportation Benefit District, I was not referring to that in the same sentence. And permanent supportive housing, we need to make land use and regulatory changes to bring that online faster, to provide those needed services and to the housing insecure. And also definitely use public-private partnerships to bring affordable housing online faster. I was at the opening of the Catfish Corner, and that is an example of a project that was very well done, and we should be doing more of that.
All right, thank you. And Nikita Oliver.
Thank you so much, Mass Coalition, for the opportunity to share space with y'all and to folks spending their evening talking about these really important issues. The thought I want to leave you with is we're in a climate catastrophe. We hear everyone talking about the heat, we experienced the smoke last year, there will be wildfires this year again, and we cannot wait to make significant strides on a just transition, ending exclusionary zoning, housing affordability, and a transportation system that is built equitably and lockstep with the housing that we need to build, and that we need to pursue getting to our climate goals, not just by 2050, but to be quite frank, we need to get there sooner. And the only way we're going to do it is by building a city where, that is walkable, that has amenities, services, and access to resources for families and their neighborhoods. And I believe I'm the candidate to make that happen with MLK Labor Support, ATU 5587, Transit Riders Union, Seattle Sunrise Movement, Seattle Puget Sound Sage Leaders, the Working Families Party, Mike O'Brien, Tammy Morales, Jeremiah Zahalai, state senators and state reps. I think that I can bring a cross-section of community together that will allow us to address this catastrophe head-on.
Thank you. And finally, Brianna Thomas.
I'm gonna use my 90 seconds to explain something I said when I launched my campaign, and people ask me regularly, how are you different than your boss? And I said, I hate scooters. I don't hate scooters, they're fun. I rode one on Alki a couple days ago, it was delightful. What I do hate is them being in the middle of the road and being a blockage for people that are just trying to move through the city. And I think my solution to that would be just give us someplace to park them, along with bicycles. You know, if we had someplace to put e-bikes and to put scooters and to put private bikes on every corner, well, not every corner, but most corners across the city, that would also, I think, improve people's willingness and ability to use these multimodal opportunities and not have to take cars everywhere. So that's what I'd like to do with my 90 seconds. And I would like to say that I think that we are all working toward transportation systems that either give people back time or money, because those are both in short supply. Thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you all so much for participating in tonight's Position Nine City Council Candidate Forum. And our candidates tonight, again, were Nikita Oliver, Sarah Nelson, and Brianna Thomas. And thanks to everybody who watched online. And I am going to turn my time, turn the rest of the time back over to Ingrid to close this out. And just a final reminder that the primary election is on August 3, and ballots will be dropping in mailboxes across the city in just a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Wonderful, thank you. My name is Ingrid Elliott, and I'm from 350 Seattle Action. I really appreciate your skillful moderation this evening, Erica Barnett, and thank you to all of our candidates for being here. Again, that primary election is coming up on August 3, very important date, so watch for your ballots in mid-July. I'd also like to thank again all our co-sponsoring organizations, not only 350 Seattle, but Cascade Bicycle Club, Disability Rights Washington, Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, Seattle Subway, Sunrise Seattle, Transportation Choices Coalition, Transportation Riders, Transit Riders Union, and The Urbanist. If you missed any of the live stream tonight or would like to share with friends, we'll be sharing a recording and a transcript via email to all who registered and also on social media. Thanks so much for being with us tonight, everyone, and have a great evening.